The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council, known as the Joint Meeting. I'd like to start by asking the scouts who are joining us tonight to stand and come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Or you could do it from your seats if that's easier. Ready?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the Joint Meeting please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Michael Moth, Board of Finance.
Cheryl Tevo, Board of Finance.
Ron Byrne, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Nick Jones, Board of Finance.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Brittany Barney, City Council.
Jake Carrier, Board of Finance.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular Joint Meeting from January 14, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the Consent Calendar with items A through P. Does anybody have anything on the Consent Calendar that they would like to pull off for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is to transfer $15,000 from the General Fund contingency account to Community Services for relocation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is to make an additional appropriation of $30,000 within the School Capital Projects Fund funded by a transfer in from the General Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going to hear the monthly revenue and expense report presentation from the Controller, Diane Waldron.
Good evening. Couple of things, you have the report, we ran this report like the beginning of February. Couple of things that I do want to note for you, our tax collections look a little bit behind when you look at that report, we were at ninety-eight, ninety-six, actually at eighty-eight percent. A lot of it is timing, when January 31st was, happened was on a Friday, and then February 1st was on Monday. So I actually went back in and I just wanted to give you a better update on where the tax collections were through, through now, through the end of January with, through that collection period. So tax collections were at ninety-eight point six percent of what was billed, which is good, we actually budget ninety-eight point five percent, so we have another five months to collect what we budgeted. But we are actually at ninety-eight point one percent of budget, so the tax collections are coming in really well, and I know Anne Bednas works really hard to collect those taxes. I know she said the delinquent notices went out, I think, this week, so they're on top of that as well. The motor vehicle supplement, I know I've reported on that the last couple of months. On this report, we were at only nine hundred and eighteen thousand collected through, when this report was run for you. We actually collected one point six million dollars of that nine hundred and eighteen thousand, I'm sorry, one point four million. We collected one point six million and we had one point four million that was budgeted, so we actually exceeded our budget for the motor vehicle supplement through January. So I thought those were good numbers to report. Again, it was just timing of, you know, when January 31st and that February 3rd date hit for the, for the payment of collections. The other thing that I do want to mention, I know we've been meeting with the department heads on their budget. One thing the tax collector just wanted me to point out tonight was, you're going to see that there's an elimination tonight for her part-time position on the council agenda. She's been able to still stay on top of all the collections, a lot of it is, a lot of people are paying online, they're mailing in their taxes, so it's going through the lockbox. And in addition to that, one of the things that was just initiated is they were able to get Quality Data Services, who does the, that's the software for the tax collections, they were able to get them to code for the first time, all the leasing payments. Before, when all those leasing payments came in, they had to annual, do them one by one and put them into the system, but now they actually get a file from the leasing company and they're able to upload it all at once. So that was a huge efficiency savings that I, I think it's important to mention, in case there were any concerns about, you know, eliminating that part-time position, but she, she's made some good improvements there. So that's all I wanted to say on taxes. Building permit revenue, again, we were at eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred through the end of January, so we're at seventy-eight point nine percent of the budget. Conveyance fees are at seventy-seven point eight, last year we're at seventy-three percent at the same time, so those are coming in well. And then investment earnings, we're at seven hundred and eighty-one thousand or eighty-four point five percent of the budget. So again, that's something that we're going to watch, but I do think will exceed what we budgeted for investment earnings for the year. Just a couple of other things that I did want to mention, we are in the midst, my office in reviewing all of the budgets for the 2021 fiscal year. We've reviewed all of the smaller departments, and I believe the next Board of Finance meeting, February 25th, all of those departments will be attending that meeting, but they won't be presenting. I think we, we kind of last year implemented a process where we kind of go through and if there are questions, we ask them, but they're, they're pretty small in relation to the whole budget. So those smaller budgets will be reviewed on the 25th, and then on February 27th, we'll be reviewing the Parks, let me say the whole thing, Parks, Recreation, and Youth and Community Services, it's all one combined, so there will be a lot to talk about there. And Library will be on February 27th. As you may know, just one other thing to point out, I know there was an article and it was released that the Graham List went up one point three six percent. That will generate about two million dollars in additional revenue with, at the thirty-eight point oh five mil rate, so that's really good going into the budget process here. And then one other thing to mention, there is a 10-year capital improvement and strategic planning committee meeting next Thursday, no, next Tuesday, the 18th, at 5:15. We have been spending, my office, a lot of time going through a lot of the capital accounts, trying to see what funds are available from some projects that are complete. We did that back in October with all the bonded funds, but if you remember, there's a lot of projects that are funded through the General Fund, so we want to see what monies are available that we can allocate and reappropriate to other purposes. So we're, we think that will be a good process, so a lot of that will be reviewed at the capital budget meeting as well. So that's all I have to say unless somebody has any questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, all good news. If there's no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February City Council meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us in another Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Peter Kelly.
Greg Hahn, First District.
Dave Proleski, Second District.
Brittany Barney, Third District.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
And Councilman Scott Rosado is not joining us tonight as he recently had surgery. A moment of reflection for all of our troops serving at home and abroad. Thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes of the regular City Council meeting of January 14, 2020.
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your Honor, Lieutenant Epstein.
One abstention for the record from Councilman Proleski. Item three is public participation, and we have one person, Orlando Kelfi, from Leslie Corp.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is just a question about the Charter Commission, so I recently read that it's been convened again, and that it's going to be chaired by Attorney Fitzgerald, and there have been people who've been appointed to sit on the committee. My question is, over the years, we've had a number of charter revisions, and to help progress our city forward in this third decade of this 21st century, using other departments as litmus tests, we've hired professional consultants to help with other areas. Is it possible at this point for our council to debate and to look at the merits of hiring a consultant to look at our charter from all aspects, top to bottom?
We are. We are hoping to do the motion that will come later, right, because we're not doing that one tonight, is to look at obsolete sections, sections that have been overtaken by state law, and anything that we can do to better organize it. I would like a complete rewrite, certain people in the front row. May not, but it's time. I mean, the last major upgrade was 1969, and it's been in effect since 1913. I still am able to raise a militia if I so chose, based on the first chapter. It's time to do an update, so we are definitely looking to do something more substantive, so, but we have a couple of issues, and we had a meeting this morning about how to tackle some of those logistical issues, so I think you're going to hear more about it in the next month or so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who did not have the opportunity to sign up for public participation that would like to address the City Council? Okay. Moving on, we are reserving time under announcements tonight to talk about our countdown to the count. The United States Census is happening this year, and it is an extremely critical time in order for all of us to be counted as a community, as a state, and actually as a country. As we're specifically concerned about Bristol, we have a lot of impact with the census, and our population data and how a lot of things flow to Bristol are going to be based on that. So we are launching an attempt to make sure everybody understands the various components of the census, how it's going to be kicked off, starting really March 1st, and then officially on April 1st, and we're doing a bunch of things locally to get people excited about it. We are specifically also going to be looking to offer assistance to underrepresented populations, undocumented citizens, people who may not speak English as a primary language, or people who may, in, in general, have some concerns about answering that type of questionnaire. So that is going to be our focus over the course of the next three months. It's going to start with people having the opportunity to answer the census online. You will also have the opportunity to request a paper copy, and then probably by the end of late spring, early summer, they will start sending out enumerators to visit households that have not responded. So the more responses that come in early, the better off everybody will be. So I wanted to have the council just spend a minute or so talking about some of the plans that we are talking about and what we're going to be doing. Here in Bristol, the Diversity Council and the Bristol Carers Committee are taking the lead in conjunction with my office on rolling out a lot of these initiatives, and we're always looking for ideas, and we're always looking for people to help. So as you hear some of the ideas that are being formulated for Bristol specifically, if you see something that other communities are doing that you think is appropriate, we would love to hear that as well. So I will start with Councilman Kelly.
Okay, on city, the city marketing department is going to be creating census count bookmarks for the library and schools, as well as a bilingual flyer to send home with students and display at libraries and other outlets. It'll also be used as an insert in newspapers, at community events. The Board of Education may also utilize their email blast, Twitter, and texting. The city marketing department is going to create messages for e-sign, Nutmeg TV, and advertising for AMP radio, which is heard at the gas stations throughout the city in March and June.
Councilman Hahn.
For social media posts, they're going to be developed by the Census Office and City Marketing. The Diversity Council will share it on their page and also have members share from the DC page. I was counted on, the 2020 census Facebook frame is being created, a customized profile picture frame for Bristol to be shared with both Bristol Allheart, Diversity Council, and other Facebook page followers. And the city is going to promote, take a selfie while completing the census campaign for notable public figures to promote census completion, and some of these pictures could be used in a paid ad campaign in the Press and Observer.
Councilman Proleski?
Thank you, you know, it's very important that we get an accurate count of everyone who resides in Bristol, because the number of people who live here, who live here can impact how we're funded and how we get grants from the federal government. Currently, our city receives over nine and a half million dollars in federal grants, and I can tell you that both on the Board of Education side and on the city side, we're aggressively pursuing all grant opportunities we can to help mitigate and offset some of our rising expenses. So that's a very important factor that people have to understand, that there's a very important impact to us financially as well, to make sure that we have an accurate count. Thank you.
So I'm excited to announce that the city is going to be working with Bristol Hospital to provide onesies to all babies born before April 1st, 2020, to emphasize that they need to be part of the count for the census, which is something that I actually did not know about. So I think it's really cool, and maybe Nutmeg can do a slow zoom to the onesie, or like this. And it's really adorable, and I'm excited that Bristol Hospital is going to be able to partner with us to help promote that education from birth and being, that citizenship, so very, very exciting things.
And lastly, we also plan to use church bulletins for the placement of notices about the census, as well as visits to Spanish and non-traditional storefront churches in the city to identify storefront churches, ethnic churches, minority-owned companies, stores, all kinds of places that we think we can reach folks that might be undercounted. The city Parks and Recreation brochure is going to include information about the census, and that goes out to thousands of families.
And next month, the Census Director for our area, the Hartford County, will be joining me at the Bristol Senior Center on March 12th to talk to the seniors about how important this count is as well. So again, if anybody has any ideas or any interest in helping us with this initiative, please let me know, because we're always interested in good ideas. Are there any other announcements to come forward at this time? Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, we have items A through J. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull off? I personally would like someone to make a motion to remove item G.
Motion to remove item G.
Second.
Can we also make a motion to remove item J?
Yes, item J.
Second.
So we are moving item G for the Historic Restoration Fund grant, and we are moving item J for the ceiling tile grid at Northeast Middle School. Those motions have been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G needs to be corrected because there was an error in the grant summary, and I just want to clarify for the record that this is a grant submission to repair and paint the walls, the plaster walls that are at the library, not the ceilings. So if we could vote on that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we do the rest of it, so now we're going to go to item J. So I see the concern looks on the Board of Education, so you're our guinea pigs tonight. Our, our PAC troop here has to hear a conversation and two sides of an argument, so we are going to choose the Northeast tile replacement as that. It's okay, Jill, this is an exercise. Okay.
We're pretending that there are two sides to this issue.
Well, there are two sides.
Of course. So item J on our consent calendar for the troops that are here is to award a contract for the replacement of the ceiling tile grid at Northeast Middle School to Khan Acoustics Incorporated for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-five, and authorize the mayor or the acting mayor to execute. So we are spending four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to replace the ceilings at a middle school. Why are we doing this right now in February when the kids are still in school? Is this a good time to be doing this project?
I don't believe so, Your Honor, it's too, it's too restrictive for the kids, the kids, somebody can get hurt.
Your Honor, I think we need to authorize the spending so that we can get bids ahead of time, so that we can be sure to get this done when the kids are off school in the summer.
Okay, so you don't think we should do it while the kids are in school, and you think we should get ready to do it so that we can do it when the kids are on vacation?
Yes.
What do you think down here, should we be doing this project?
Yes, I do, because the improvement to the infrastructure is needed, the can has been kicked on the road for too long, and holding off doing it will actually end up costing us more money.
Councilman Hahn, this school is in your district, what do you think?
I agree with Councilman Fortier, it's necessary, we need to get a jump on the, the bids so that we can be ready for the summer and get it all done in the summer so it's ready when the kids come back to school. And we can't do it piecemeal, we can't do some now and some later, has to be all done at once.
But when we do a project of this size, I mean, this is half a million dollars, we usually wait until July 1st so that all of this funding can flow together with our capital budget. Right?
That's the norm.
So why would we break with the norm, Councilman Fortier?
Again, because this project will impact the students, and we, if we wait till July 1st to go up to bid for this, we would have to wait till next summer to do the project without impacting kids, and more tiles could be falling down, actually disrupting the classroom, actually possibly hurting kids, so we need to get it done as soon as possible.
And you know, Your Honor, we probably won't have to pay this bill until after we go through the process of our, our, our committee work.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, though? Does anybody know where Khan Acoustics Incorporated is located?
Mr. Callahan, do you know where they're located?
They're local, but I'm not sure they're, they're.
Are they a Bristol company?
No, they are not.
Why aren't we hiring a Bristol company? Sorry about that, Chief.
Good to see everybody tonight, you kind of scared me with this little exercise. I didn't realize we were going to be talking about this as much, but anyhow, I'm prepared to speak about it. And your question was in regards to why we didn't go local. Well, we have to go with the lowest bid by our charter, so this is the lowest bid, the four hundred and seventy-seven thousand is in fact the lowest bid, and we can accept anybody in the local area who meets the requirements for the front-end specifications, so they met those requirements. Thank you. You're welcome.
While you're standing there, how long do you think a project like this will take?
Our, our plan is to do it over the summer, as you just spoke. We will complete it over the summer, we were looking initially at doing it during the school year. We went out to bid early and we had some very high numbers because of all the mobilization costs of the contractor coming in, working late night hours, we came back, the bids were slightly over, so we said, met with a apparent low bidder and said, what was the problem with the way the bid was organized? They came back to us and said it was the, the phasing and the fact that they had to work nights and on limited shifts and some overtime, that it cost more money. So we came back with it to do it in the summertime. No students are there, we met with the superintendent and the principal to go through that. It's actually safer, as you were talking about, Mary, that it's safer for the kids. We can walk in and out of the building, we can mobilize, we can put our ceiling tiles in the building and not have to worry about storing them on-site and so forth, so it makes a lot more sense for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So before Mrs. Brown really has a heart attack, let's vote on this item.
I have some information for you. This company is based in Newington, so it is a Connecticut company.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving item J to award the contract to C-20-049, replacement of ceiling tile grid at Northeast Middle School to Khan Acoustics?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And who made, who made the motion?
Councilman Kelly? Kelly?
I think, when we took it off the agenda, I'm not sure.
I made the motion to take it off the agenda.
So you'll make, take the motion.
Sure.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Okay, so we're good with that. Now the remaining consent calendar in its entirety, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your Honor, can I make a comment before we move on from the consent calendar on item F of the Graham Street of the Acceptance?
You, yes, you can comment, but before we do that, 2425, was that enough? Okay, thank you.
We're sorry, we're such an agreeable group.
You wanted to just comment on item F, which has been approved, the recommendation?
Yes, I did, I just wanted to compliment the Ordinance Committee and Public Works as well for all the work they did on Graham Street. We had constituents that were concerned about it, it was addressed pretty rapidly, and Councilman Proleski went up and spoke to the concerned party and got involved with ordinance and Public Works, and everyone is happy, so, so thank you to everyone involved for this happy ending to this concern.
And we're going to hopefully see that same successful completion throughout the rest of the town as people use that ordinance for unaccepted city streets.
Right, the, the plan is to approach it incrementally, is it not?
Yes.
On a by-need basis?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to. We did. We did. Reports and committee reports, we're going to start with three items from the Ordinance Committee. The first is for the BDA name change.
Thank you, Your Honor, there are three issues for the council this, this evening. Two, the first two are recommendations from the committee after public hearings. We have a couple of motions. This is the motion to approve the amendments to Article 23, the Bristol Development Authority and Bristol Downtown Development Corporation, and Article 14, Enterprise Zone Assessments of the City, the Code of Ordinances to the City of Bristol is hereby amended to read as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish the said amendments in additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. And Your Honor, what this does is, this effectuates the name change. This effectuates the name change from the Bristol Development Authority to the Economic and Community Development Department.
Okay. So that's in the form of a motion, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Any discussion on the name change for the department? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, item 6B, again, was recommended to the council after a public hearing, and it concerns itself with prohibitive, prohibition of smoking in our public parks and recreational facilities. I hereby move that section 16-3 through 16-8, Parks and Recreation penalties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby to, meant be amended as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of the publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. And Your Honor, this is a, a, a new ordinance that I think is long in the making and is overdue, and I'd like to ask our, our director, Dr. Maderos, if he'd like to come and address the council.
All right, good evening. This ordinance change, can you hear me? This ordinance change has been in the works since, over the summer, we started working on this policy. The policy is to reduce smoking in our parks, including vaping, which has become a big issue. The policy was endorsed by our Board of Park Commissioners unanimously, and then also our Youth Commission unanimously as well. We're hoping the city of Bristol tonight will vote to join thousands of municipalities across the state and country that are adopting similar, similar language, with the hopes that we're creating a smoke-free environment for the many patrons that come and use our parks and our recreational spaces throughout the year. So we're, our department and both of our commissions are very passionate about this issue and are excited that it is finally here tonight for your consideration.
Your Honor, this will be a complaint-driven ordinance where. Your Honor, this will be a complaint-driven ordinance, where if someone complains, our police department has some enforcement capabilities. There's also an accreditation piece to this, isn't there, Josh?
Right. One of the things our department is pursuing is a CAPR accreditation for the National Recreation Parks Association. Having an ordinance to prohibit smoking is one of the standards that we are looking to achieve in that, so it serves that purpose. It also is aligned with our Drug-Free Communities grant, which is actually going to provide some funding to put up signs within the parks to reduce smoking again. I will also say the ordinance change is supported by the Bristol Burlington Health Department. I know our chief of police is excited about it as well, based on our conversation a minute ago.
And, Your Honor...
Oh, sorry, do you need a second?
We do.
I'll second that motion.
Your Honor, I'd like to acknowledge that there are a bunch of people who should be thanked for this. Dr. Maderos, of course, his board, especially Commissioners Bogdansky and Donovan, who came to the public hearing and participated, and also council member Rosado and yourself, Your Honor, and from the staff side, Chief Gould, Attorney Conlon, and Marco Palmeri.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Maderos? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last ordinance committee item.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a cleanup of the current existing ordinance, and we'd like, the ordinance committee is asking that, in accordance with Section 21F, the charter of the City of Bristol, that we, the following code of ordinances be introduced, and it has to do with Section 15, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, and Sections 15-25, penalties and enforcements. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, March 3, 2020, at 4:50 p.m. in the first-floor meeting room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by our city charter.
Second.
Discussion?
I actually have a question. So is this ordinance only specific to, like, individuals violating it, or does it also apply to businesses?
Any person responsible for noise.
Okay, so if, like, someone had a complaint about a nearby establishment making noise, this ordinance does not apply to them? It does?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to also double-check. And how do we measure that complaint? Do we have tools or people that go out?
The police department has decibel readers.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions concerning this public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to real estate, three items.
Your Honor, I have three motions, two regarding... I have three motions, two for lease agreements at that time of year, and then a third for a public hearing. First, I'd like to present the motion for the Bristol Burlington Health District lease. I hereby move that the City of Bristol approve the lease agreement by and between the City of Bristol landlord and the Bristol Burlington Health District tenant for a portion of the property located at Douglas A. Beale Senior Center, Senior Community Center, Bristol, Connecticut, for a three-year term commencing January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2022. The total rent paid by tenant shall be $52,459.61 per year, or $4,371.63 per month, for each month beginning January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020, which is based on the rental of 3,136 square feet at $16.72.81 per square foot. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $52,984.20 per year, or $4,415.35 per month, for each month beginning January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021, which is based on the rental of 3,136 square feet at $16.89.54 per square foot. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $53,514.04 per year, of $4,459.50 per month, for each month beginning January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, which is based on the rental of 3,136 square feet at a rate of $17.06.44 per square foot. I further move that this matter be referred to the corporate counsel to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For my second motion with the Police Mutual Aid, I hereby move that the City of Bristol approve the lease agreement by and between the City of Bristol and the Police Mutual Aid of Bristol Incorporated for a portion of the property located at 131 North Main Street, basement floor, Bristol, Connecticut, to be used for the purposes of an exercise, fitness, and shower room facility for the term of two years commencing January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2022, for the annual rent of $1 per year. I further move that this matter be referred to corporate counsel to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last item from real estate?
And the last item. Pursuant to 7163E of the Connecticut General Statutes, it's requested that the city clerk set a date for public hearing to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Bristol Hospital Incorporated and/or its assigns for city-owned property located at 51 High Street, Bristol, Connecticut. The public hearing to be held on March 17, 2020, at 4:45 p.m. in City Council Chambers, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, and for the city clerk to publish said notice in accordance with the statute. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 824, I hereby move to refer this matter to the Planning Commission for Recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Salary Committee?
Yes, I have several items from the Salary Committee. Item G is to approve temporary partial funding of one Board of Education technical support position and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding. And my understanding is that this is in the amount of about $15,000 through this fiscal year, till the end of this fiscal year.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
I would just explain that, based on the number of technology devices that the Board of Education has, it's been recommended that we have a lot more technical support positions, and this is giving some partial funding to have at least one more through this fiscal year, and this position will be in the new budget that the board will present to us.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H is to approve the elimination of the part-time principal clerk tax position, Local 233, Salary Code 4A, effective immediately, and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second? Second?
Again, as our comptroller explained at the end of the joint meeting, this is a position someone has left, and the tax collector has looked at how her office is functioning, and she believes she can continue without this part-time position. And since I've been a councilperson, this is, this used to be a full-time position when I first became a councilperson, so it became a part-time position, and now we're eliminating that. And part of that is the fact that we're automating so much of what we do, and so much is done online, that we're able to do, you know, a lot more with less people. And it was a hard decision for her, but it's a good one for the city.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I and J do go together, but I'll do them separately. Item I is to approve the creation of a position of Administrative Assistant Fire, Local 233, Salary Code 7, effective April 1, 2020, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Second. Discussion on the motion?
Again, with the next item, this is replacing a non-bargaining position with a bargaining position, which is less pay. In other words, again, a reorganization of that office, and it will save the city money.
So the motion for I has been made and seconded. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the other half of that issue is Item J, to approve the elimination of a position of Administrative Assistant Fire, Non-Bargaining, Salary Level 5, effective July 1, 2020, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is K, the Opioid Task Force Update. We continue to meet monthly. We have a very robust group that joins us, that include people in recovery, as well as city staff, family, friends, and healthcare professionals. Earlier today, right here in the chambers, Nutmeg came in early, and we taped a roundtable discussion with a lot of the people who come to our task force meetings, and that will be broadcast at some point in the near future on Nutmeg, so that people can hear about what the task force is doing, and especially about what the community is doing to combat this public health crisis. So that's our latest initiative, and there's lots more to come, many grants that we're applying for, and a lot of plans for those as well. Moving on to the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The committee continues to meet monthly. We coordinate between the Board of Ed, committee members, our project manager, Mr. Callahan, who's here tonight, our construction manager, and our architects. The design documents have been completed and are in file with the Facilities Office at the Board of Education. Our architects, the construction manager, and the Board of Education, and staff are in a review stage with the design documents, and what we're reconciling is the needs of our Board of Education staff with the specifications in the design documents, and we're reconciling that with the proposed budget. The next step after that would be to go out the formal bid for the actual construction of the building. The construction manager is working on infrastructure, forensic and soil analysis, sewer lines, and we continue to, with Mr. Callahan, to coordinate with the State of Connecticut and the various departments, working to ensure that we have a clear line of communication and clarification on state reimbursements. There will be a community meeting planned for the month of March. You'll see that on our city website and the Board of Education website, and our next meeting is scheduled for February 27 at the Board of Education at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Councilman Proleski pertaining to the Memorial Boulevard? Okay. Other committee reports, starting on my far right.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'll combine School Readiness, Board of Education, and Public Works. I discussed some of this at the Board of Education meeting, but it bears repeating, and I'm going to be adding a bit as well. Reciprocity of savings with shared services are approaching, now this is talking Board of Ed with the city than within the city as well, is approaching in the area of $500,000. Public Works recently has done tree cutting at schools, drainage work at Eastern and Mountain View, and this work includes civil engineering, excavating, and construction. And the Department of Public Works helped the Board of Ed with motor vehicle repairs on snow removal equipment, which normally would have been sent out to vendors, and those numbers add up quickly when you do that. The Sewer Department has also jetted out sanitary lines at several schools, and the Board of Ed has had skilled maintenance folks that worked alongside Public Works on HVAC, plumbing, electrical repairs in multiple municipal buildings, including Police and Fire, the Senior Center, City Hall, to name a few. And the Director of Facilities, Peter Fusco, has been working alongside the Department of Public Works to assist them with renovation projects throughout the city. And earlier, we touched on the IT tech support, which is a big piece of this and is going to be a big savings as well. And not related to the Board of Ed, but within the city, we are going to be doing internally parcel nine over in downtown development across the street, and the savings there are estimated to be in the $170,000 range. And already done internally was the Muzzy Field parking lot, which savings were in the area of $150,000. So it's always nice to share when money is being saved. Specifically with the Board of Ed, the Northeast Middle School floor, the gym floor is going to be reinstalled. It's got to be taken down and built back up. It's almost as old as Councilman Proleski and myself, so it's time. And without getting into the bloody details, the number, including soft costs and the demolition, abatement, and construction, is going to be in the area of $400,000. Now, this is needed infrastructure that has been neglected for years, and it's absolutely time. And speaking of something else very much needed, stage curtains at both high schools. 1991-92 was when they were installed, so those are both going to be replaced to the tune of approximately $40,000 each. But it will be put out the bid, and hopefully those numbers can be improved upon. And in addition to that, a theater consultant has a list of issues. They're going to be prioritized by safety and then get into the cosmetics eventually, but many theater parents are going to be happy to hear that. Finally, I wanted to touch on a couple articles recently in the Bristol press that the School Readiness Council follows pretty religiously, and it has to do with the correlation of a decline in parents reading to their young children. In 2013, the percentage of parents that would read to their young child was 50%. In 2018, it declined to 47. Now, in 2019, it's declined down to 44. And that's not a good trend, and there's a direct correlation between the decline in parents reading to their young children and the use of handheld electronic devices. So we would like to ask for anyone's help in this, whether you're a caregiver, a grandparent, or a friend. It's very important, because the use of too much media devices displaces physical activity in children, social interaction, hands-on exploration, and quality sleep as well. So the School Readiness Council is working, along with the Early Childhood Alliance and the library, to inform parents of the dangers of too much screen time for young children. And the American Academy of Pediatrics suggests up to 18 months old, no screen time. Two to five years old, they say an hour is okay, as long as it's quality programming. So if we can get the word out, it is very, very important. Thank you.
Counselor?
I have no further reports.
Councilman Proleski?
No, thank you.
Counselor Hine?
I do have two reports from the library. I wanted to announce that the Friends of the Bristol Public Library is hosting their 2020 Annual Used Book Sale. I think it's important to talk about here, because they like to get any publicity they can get, because this generates money for programming. The Friends of the Bristol Library use all those funds to develop quality programming for the children's library and for the main library. The sale's going to be run from February 26 through March 1. The sale's going to be run from February 26 through March 1. If you're a big book person, there's a preview night with a cost of $5 on February 26 from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Otherwise, the rest of the sale is free, and those times will range between the different days that it's available. So if you have questions about the times, you could go to the library, or you can contact the library for more information. The library's director, Deb Prozo, was here earlier, probably making sure that everything went well with the funding question, and that if she could answer anything for us, that she was present. But they're doing a great job of trying to source out some funding from the state to fix some real health concerns of part of the library's plaster walls. So she's going to be presenting her budget to the Board of Finance. That was mentioned by Diane Waldron on February 27. So if you're interested in the library, where their funds come from, and what they're planning to do with those funds, you can come out that night to see a little bit more about how that whole process works. And then the second committee announcement I had was from the Fire Board. I think this is important to share with everybody because people watching might have children or grandchildren or themselves be interested in a career in firefighting, and we've made a big change to how we'll be hiring for firefighters going forward. The existing process is all maintained through the city's Personnel Department, or they're the Human Resources Department now. And so that has a cost to the city of about $4,000 for each time we test. It was recently presented to the Fire Board of Commissioners that we could join the Consortium of Connecticut. The full name is the State of Connecticut Fire Testing Consortium, which is essentially a group of people, a group of communities that come together and are actually all pooling together to test. Now, with this consortium change comes a change in fee. The application to apply to be a firefighter in the consortium will be $145. The testing will begin on, let me make sure I write my notes properly, March 9 through March 14. So if you're interested in putting in an application, I would suggest doing that soon. If $145 is too much of a cost, you can definitely contact the company that offers the testing at iosolutions.com. They are able to waive testing fees for hardship reasons, and I'm excited personally for this because not only is it a savings to the city and takes a burden off of our Human Resources Department to focus their attention on other things, it still gives us a really high-quality candidate pool and also opens the opportunity for us to attract more diverse candidates to join our firefighter department, and that's, I think, really important to us. We're still going to prioritize hiring Bristol residents, but this gives us a real opportunity to join with our neighboring communities and get the best of the best to join Bristol, which is already the best of the best. Great opportunity for the candidates, too, because they now have one application going into 14 other communities in Connecticut. Gives them a better chance of getting a job. Just so you know, we wanted to make sure from the Fire Board of Commissioners, was a great group of people who care a lot about the integrity of that department, the citizens that are on that committee, they wanted to make sure we still hired from our existing list, which is valid until November of 2020. So we will be honoring that list in case there are candidates watching this now that tested previously. We will still be honoring our list until it expires in November. All right, and that, I think, is everything I wanted to explain about the testing consortium. Wait, one more thing. It's going to be on our city's website in case you wanted to see where this flyer is. There's actually a flyer on the State of Connecticut's website, too, with more information in case you were curious about how to apply. That's all.
Thank you.
And I have no committee reports. Did you want me to bring that agenda item up? I'm going to make a motion that we bring a giant agenda, item 17, up on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor of moving agenda item 17 to the front?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So item 17 is an authorization for the mayor or the acting mayor to execute the access and use agreement for environmental remediation at Pine Lake with Superior Electric Holding Group LLC. This is not a city project. This is a remediation project that the Superior Electric Company is conducting based on contamination that has flowed from their location eastward toward our Pine Lake. And so we've been negotiating this for a long time, and our Parks Superintendent is here, and because this is such a far-reaching project, I was hoping that he could come forward and just give us a snapshot quickly of maybe just the timeframe and also what you see in terms of any challenges at Pine Lake specifically and what you've negotiated.
Sure. So as you kind of mentioned and alluded, this is a very complex project that's been working closely with my office as well as Public Works and through our land use boards. There are pollutants within a lot of the wetlands areas that lead towards Pine Lake, so this is a remediation project to go out there, excavate those elements, those pollutants that are contaminating the ecosystem there that exists. So unfortunately, part of that work is going to disturb some of the trees within that area. They need to create roadways in order to get their machines towards the wetlands to excavate the sediments off the bottom. It is a multi-year project. Again, as you mentioned, it's not really a city project, but it is impacting one of our best parks. Part of it, it is also impacting, let me back up, excuse me, so the trees that are coming down.
I've done it before, too, Chief Field, so.
Part of the negotiations and the ongoing discussion has been to, ERM is going to restore those trees and plant whatever they take down, actually more, they're going to be replanting the ecosystem there to restore that. But in addition to the environment that's going to be impacted during this process, they're also impacting our Pine Lake Adventure Challenge Course that exists there, which is operated as a business at this point. So we were able to negotiate with ERM, they're going to be funding $90,000 in unrestricted funds back to the city for the impact it's going to have to our business there. So we were very happy, and that was a lot of back and forth to kind of get us to that number that we're, I think, more than makes the challenge course whole, I guess. In terms of a timeline, they are looking for approval pretty quickly. Obviously, tonight, this access agreement lets them begin to access the site. They're hoping to get out there in the March of 2020 timeframe. The work progresses and will impact certain areas in September and then beyond. They also will be coming back for a three-year process to check to make sure that all the sediments are removed, and like I said, it's very complex and challenging. But they are going to be hosting a public informational hearing on this, I want to say, February 27 at 6 o'clock, and I believe they're looking at Adult Resource Center near Pine Lake to be that venue. So I'm assuming they will be mailing information out to the neighbors and other stakeholders associated with this project, but that's kind of in a nutshell.
So the role of the city will really be to just monitor what's happening between mostly Public Works land use and then you in terms of impact on the Pine Lake?
Correct. And ERM, I will say, you know, they're working closely with our office to keep us abreast of the timeline and working with our staff to limit the impact as much as possible, given the circumstances that we're dealing with.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And thank you, Councilman Ford, for bringing that forward. Dr. Maderos has another meeting that he has to go to, so we're trying to accommodate his busy schedule.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Do we?
So that is not a resolution, so if there's no further discussion and it has been...
I actually, sorry, I'm going to be really annoying. I do want to actually say something because I was on the Pine Lake Area Study Committee before joining the city council, and I just wanted to applaud Ray in particular. He came to those meetings, brought ERM to meet with the Pine Lake Area Study Committee, which, just so you know, is a group of people that have lived right near Pine Lake for almost their whole lives and are very much intertwined with that area. And he didn't have to do that, but he did that to make sure that every person that has a connection to this property understood the process. And as part of that conversation, they brought up that some of the spaces where there was going to be staging areas were disturbing areas that didn't need to be disturbed because there was open space that they could take up to reduce the number of trees that would be taken down. And the company, ERM, was actually very receptive to that and moved their staging areas to try to lessen the impact to the area. So while it is a lot of trees, and I personally have gone to Pine Lake many times, I've hung up my hammock, which I don't know if I'm allowed to do, so don't let Josh get mad at me, with my friends in Pine Lake and sat with my daughter when she was a baby, you know, I have a lot of great memories there, and I know many people do, so it's going to be a big change. But I also attended the Inland Wetlands Meeting that happened on September 4 and asked questions to the environmental scientist, and she was very open with telling us about what they would do and the trees that Josh alluded to. While they're going to be taking down towering, beautiful pine trees that are very unique to that area, they are going to be replacing them with, I think the ratio she said was 600 for every acre of forested area, so about 1,000 trees they're planning to plant in comparison to the 600 or so they are going to be taking down that are four to six feet in height. So they're not going to be just planting seedlings that are, you know, 18 inches high. They will be a little bit more of a robust tree to try to make them competitive with the rest of the area. So if you're concerned about learning more about this, obviously that meeting is important to go to. But the September 4 meeting minutes for the Inland Wetlands Commission actually has a lot of information about this whole plan from that point in time. I'm sure there's been an evolution to the plan by now, but there's a lot of information there, too, so just in case you are curious at home now, you can find out more right now. Sorry. I'm passionate about it. Mary and I love the Pine Lake people, so.
Yes.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
I've been a longtime liaison to the Pine Lake Committee, and they are certainly passionate about it. And as much as this is going to be a big impact, we do understand that it needs to be done. The, you know, contamination there is serious business, and we have to take care of it. And the city clerk did hand me the official motion, which apparently I didn't get when I clicked on the right thing here, so I'm just going to repeat. I move that the city of Bristol enter into an access and use agreement with Superior Electric Holding Group LLC to perform environmental remediation and monitoring activities at Pine Lake Park identified as Lot Number 38 on Assessors Map 3, subject to review and approval by the Corporation Council and the Parks Superintendent. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
Second.
Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, are we done with committee reports? I would just like to motion for anybody that has the opportunity to circulate, we are changing the format for the youth cabinet for 2020. It is being taken over by the Parks Recreation, Youth, and Community Services Division, and will be run in conjunction with the meetings of the departments that they are going to be getting information on, as opposed to being before the city council meetings as it was the past two years. So the first youth cabinet for 2020 is next Wednesday, February 19, and it will run before the Parks Department Commission meeting, and they will be invited to join that meeting if they so chose, or they can just come for the activity that precedes it. And then we have the calendar that is published through the end of this year. We take the summer off, and then we'll be back for the fall. So that's how it's going to be running for the 2020 season, changing it up a little bit. So for any of you who have entrusted young people or on your committees or groups that you interact with, please let them know that they can start looking for those notices as early as next week. Moving on to unfinished business, we have one item. It is the council charge that we must formally give to the 2020 Charter Revision Commission. I believe we have a motion, and then we need to have a little bit of discussion on this.
Your Honor, I have the motion. The city council is empowered to make recommendations to the Charter Revision Committee of any items or issues of concern, and with that, I hereby move that the city council recommend that the following item of the charter be reviewed for amendment by the Charter Revision Commission. Section 18, City Treasurer, it is the city council's recommendation that the position be changed from an elected official to an appointed official. It is further recommended that the Charter Revision Commission limit its review to this item solely and issue its final report in time so that it, as to allow the question to appear on the November 2020 ballot.
Second. Okay, second. So there's been a motion and a second on this for now for discussion purposes. I just want to introduce it by letting everyone know that this is a technical maneuver that we have to do in order to comply with the regulations governing how we do charter revision in order to allow them to issue a final report. When they issue their final report, that will then generate the report to us, which we will then evaluate and get on the ballot. Now, if this is an item that sounds familiar to everyone, it's because it is. It was actually one of our questions from 2019, and it was one of the three that failed. After much deliberation, I do believe that we did not do enough to promote the questions, especially with the sheer number of them. It was a complicated ballot, and this is one that is especially important because if we can bring it back and we can educate the public as to why we want this and what is going to be accomplished in doing so, and we get it on the 2020 ballot with a positive, affirmative vote, we will then not have to have a treasurer candidate from either party stand in the 2021 election. If we do not do it in 2020, then we still have to have a candidate from both parties run in 2021. Let's say the question gets approved in 2021, there's still a two-year term that has to be held by that treasurer because the charter revision questions, if approved at the ballot, do not go into effect until 14 days thereafter. So this one is critically important. It was a bipartisan attempt last year from the treasurer, Tom Barnes and I, to do this, but I think we just assumed that everybody would understand what we were doing, and unfortunately, it did not succeed at the ballot box. So we're going to try this approach, and then immediately upon the Charter Revision Commission rendering their report, we will then impanel them again and give them all the additional charges that we would like them to look at, including the comprehensive review of the obsolete sections, reorganization, and any other charges that we feel would be appropriate. But this has to be bifurcated in this way in order to handle conforming with what's required for final reports. Everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded. If nobody has any questions or concerns or comments to our legal staff, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, motion carries. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the city council?
Your Honor, I do have one item, and I meant to do this at announcements, and we went quickly. And rather than unfinished business, I'm going to call it almost finished business. The O'Connell School Project, which is a conversion to senior housing, is almost done. We did hear today that they just have to hook up, do the final hookups for their geothermal heating and cooling system, and that they are going to be opening that up for leases applications at the end of the month. And I also heard that the Bingham Project, which was completed in the fall, has 92% filled. In other words, and I bet you that's almost all but one unit, because I think there's 40-something units there, so I'm thinking that there's only one unit left at the Bingham Project. So I'm very excited about that. That was something I championed when I was my first term as a councilperson, and I think that was certainly the highest and best use for those buildings. It's something we're in need of is housing for our seniors. We do have one of the highest numbers of people over 65 in the whole greater Hartford, Central Connecticut area, and so I'm thrilled when we provide great housing for them. So I'm thrilled, and these are great projects with the geothermal and all kinds of other energy assistance features, so they're making use of beautiful historic buildings, but they're making them beautiful new buildings, so.
That's great news. Any other unfinished business? Okay, moving on to the downtown update, we have one item under this agenda, and that is to award contract 2C20-038, the Riverside Avenue Road Diet and Streetscape Project, inclusive of change order one, to Martin Lovero Contractor, Inc., for $577,267.20. And this is a motion to authorize myself or the acting mayor to execute. So we've been talking about the streetscape for a while, so this is between North Main Street and Main Street. We will be doing a streetscape on the north side. That is where the hospital and the new construction will hopefully be for parcels one, two, and three. We do have the Public Works Director here if anybody has any technical questions that they would like to ask at this time, but I believe this project will be late spring? Late spring. Okay. Hearing none, may we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, in addition to this, Councilman Kelly also referenced parcel nine, which is the public parking lot that we're creating, which will be surface parking. There's also going to be a walkway that connects the parking lot back to Main Street because, as many of you realize, when parcel 10 construction starts, we are going to lose that parking lot that is servicing some of the Main Street businesses. And parcel 10 is currently doing their site planning, and they will be before land use boards shortly. And then around the corner, North Main at Riverside, the tobacco project is actually doing... doing leases with potential tenants. I believe one has already been signed, and two others are in the works. And once he has all those leases executed, he's going to go for his site plan as well. So that will be happening in spring. Pure Foods is coming before the Startup Bristol Committee next week, and we're anticipating that that vacancy on North Main Street will be filled probably by the beginning of April. And we also had a very great meeting this week with the developer who wants to put a five-story building on the corner of North Main at Route 6. It's a very exciting project, and he is going to be entering the land use process probably within the next month or so as well. On Main Street, we have the Funk Building in Eagle Federal. They are in the process of filling out their tax increment financing application to be brought to the city. That is an integral part of their financing and their capital stack, so we will be looking for that shortly. And that's a private transaction, so Bristol Hospital will be hopefully closing with them shortly. Trying to think of some other things. Well, as a public document, there was a signed permit taken out in the Building Department yesterday for the Memorial Boulevard, the former grocery store, and that is apparently going to be a Dollar General. So unclear about the current Dollar General and whether it's relocating completely or having a second location, but that will be occupied shortly, and hopefully the window appearance will be much better than what it currently is. And the Carrier Project, which is the 32 townhouses on Main Street opposite the library entrance, will be going shovels in the ground as soon as the weather allows it, while that has been approved by the Zoning Commission. And for those of you who have commented on the lights that you've seen on at the former Supernatural and on Main Street, both of those are new business entities that will be opening shortly, and Justin is working with those contacts as well. So we're waiting to get more specific information about what those business models are going to look like. So a lot of empty buildings have been filled, a lot of new businesses coming in, and the way I look at it, our challenges remain the former Bristol Press Building, of which we've shown that building to many people, the Downtown Cafe because of its lack of parking, and 267 Main Street, which is on the code enforcement agenda every month. So we're going to continue to work on those, but for the most part, I think there is a lot of really good things happening downtown. So it's going to be great to have that streetscape and that parking and the walkway and all of that starting to pull together. Does anybody have anything else, questions or concerns on downtown? Okay. So we voted on that, right, Therese?
We did have motion. Yeah.
We did vote, okay. So moving on to new business, we do have a new item for the agenda that we're going to need to bring on.
Okay. Your Honor, I'd like to bring to the table the Sunjet Virtual Net Metering Agreement, and I have a proposal. I hereby move approval of an amendment entitled First Amendment to the Municipal Virtual Metering Credit Services Agreement, a copy of which is attached hereto, subject to approval by the Corporation Council, and that the Mayor, Ellen A. Zapposasou, or Acting Mayor be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to effect said First Amendment.
So it's my understanding that this is a technical change to the contract that we signed in the fall?
Well, it's technical in that we would like the effective date to not be the effective date of the last person to sign, but rather when these solar installations actually begin to generate the virtual net metering credits. So that's one thing. And apparently, when Sunjet went to its investor for the financing to, you know, create these installations, they said it really should be 30 years. Our contract, our original contract with them was 20, with our option to extend it an additional 10. So we're just going to go for the 30-year term.
Okay.
Okay.
So is that clear to everybody? The amendment? Okay. The motion has been made, and I think there was a second.
Second, if not.
Now there's a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. New business by council members. Does anybody have any items?
None from me, thank you.
No?
None.
Okay. Moving on to resignations, I'll turn this portion of our agenda over to our Town and City Clerk.
And there is one resignation, and it's from Tim Gamash from the Zoning Commission.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept, place on file, and send a letter of thanks?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item are appointments. The first appointment is to appoint Greg Hahn to replace Scott Rosado as Acting Mayor for a three-month term to May of 2020. That is a mayor's appointment and does not require a vote. Bristol Historic District Commission, the first one is to appoint Colleen Nacastro to replace Robert Boudreau, who asked to not be reappointed, for a five-year term to January of 2025.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second one for the Bristol Historic District Commission is to appoint Larry Nelson to replace Daniel Mike, an alternate member who has been moved up to regular member, for an unexpired term to January of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I believe Mr. Nelson is with us. Congratulations. That actually brings the Historic District Commission back to full capacity after many months of missing members. The next item is the Housing Authority, City of Bristol. We are receiving tonight the election results for Ada Aviles as the tenant representative. She will have a term through December 31st, 2024. And I don't believe this requires a vote, does it?
No.
Okay. That's without a vote. The next item is our Pine Lake Area Study Committee, and after all that we heard tonight, I'm happy to announce that we have three interested people who approached the city and wanted to get involved with the Pine Lake Area Study Committee. And they are Kim Adamsky, who is actually replacing Brittany Barney, who resigned upon her election. So that was effective last year, so we'll be appointing Kim Adamsky. We are appointing Michael Vito Montelli, and we are also appointing David Calhoun. So may I please have a motion to approve all three of those as members of the study committee?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
Am I allowed to vote since Dave's my husband?
Do you want him out of the house for another night?
I mean, absolutely, but I just, you know, I want to make sure I'm being ethical.
Just put it on the record that you do have a personal relationship.
There we go.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
The next appointment is the Board of Public Works to reappoint Frank Stausky for a three-year term to February of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Frank also serves on our Memorial Boulevard Task Force and has spent some time on our Energy Commission as well.
Good guy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Zoning Commission, I'd like to appoint Susan Tyler to replace Tim Gamash, who has resigned, for an unexpired term as an alternate to 1222.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'm going to do a little bit of housekeeping. As you know, because of the last charter revision, our Sewer Committee is going away from the Public Works Department and going to the Water Board of Commissioners. They are going to serve as members of the Sewer Commission, as well as their role as Water Board Commissioners, with the same terms. So I need somebody to read this motion. I will give it to you, because I can't make motions.
All right. I moved that pursuant to the City Charter, Section 48A, a Sewer Commission be established and comprised of the Board of Water Commissioners and entrusted with the general supervision of water pollution control for the city. I further move that the following persons be appointed as Sewer Commissioners. Kathleen Ferrier, her appointment to expire December 2020. Robert Bedell, his appointment to expire December 2020. Ramiro Suarez, his appointment to expire December 2021. Elizabeth Phelan, her appointment to expire December 2021. And Sean Dunn, his appointment to expire December 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Do you want to do the rest of the agenda, Therese, or do you want?
Me, too.
You'll do it?
I'll do it.
Okay. I'm thirsty.
Item 12, to rescind the motion approved at the July 20th, 1983 Special City Council meeting regarding requirements for the formation of a selection committee and to refer this matter to the Board of Finance for appropriate action. So moved.
Second.
So we're going to have a little bit of discussion on this, in case any of you are wondering what happened on July 20th, 1983, and why we're rescinding it. So at that point, according to John Smith, our historian, there was a lot of activity circulated around political involvement in the awarding of contracts. So they decided to create selection committees and sequester the council influence on those to one member or the council member associated with the department, you know, those of us who serve as liaisons to boards to specific departments, to serve on those selection committees in order to not have that type of involvement. So that has been what we've done for 30-something years, but with the changing nature of the council, as well as the contracts, I have found that it's very burdensome, and we, the council, are being asked to serve on panels of which we have absolutely no expertise, knowledge, and frankly, in most cases, time. So I believe at this point that we're actually doing a disservice to some of those selection committees. I don't think I did any damage when I sat on the phosphorus nitrate complex redo of the sewer plant, but I could have. There's a stack of books on my desk right now for something to do with traffic signalization, of which I am not an expert, but I'm going to sit on that panel. And I think we all have similar experiences, whether it be with technical building issues, et cetera. So at this point, what we're going to do is rescind this motion in order to provide more flexibility to the Purchasing Department. So this is actually going to the Board of Finance, which has jurisdiction over those regulations, in the hope that they will see the wisdom of this. This will allow our purchasing agent and department heads to actually form selection committees that actually have expertise and have the time and energy to do these in the professional way in which they should be conducted. When appropriate, and when there is interest from the City Council, you absolutely have the opportunity to jump on and say that that is of interest to you, and that you will be absolutely included in those selection committees, as your schedules allow. Some of us are here in town on a daily basis, some of us are not. Some of us are not available during the time. What this has also done is really just created some efficiency issues, because it elongates the process as we try to maneuver dates to accommodate people's schedules to do this, and so sometimes project time is lost as well, because it's become a very cumbersome process. So this is just to go back to the Board of Finance and those purchasing requirements to see if they're willing to just really lessen some of that burden. So that's what we're doing, but it has to start here, because this is where the motion was made in 1983. Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded now. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I just want to make the point, too, that the results of these commissions will be brought to the City Council for any approval that's required anyway. So the City Council will have their say on all the issues that are brought forward, too.
Yes. Nothing else will change in the process, except how we compose the selection panels. Hearing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yay.
Item 13, resolution regarding authorization to prepare schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Stafford School Roof Replacement Project to include solar panels and mechanical upgrades at the Stafford School, 212 Louisiana Avenue, Bristol. And there is a resolution to read? I can read that, Your Honor. Resolved that the Bristol City Council authorize at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Stafford School Roof Replacement Project to include solar panels and mechanical upgrades at the Stafford School located at 212 Louisiana Avenue in Bristol, Connecticut.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. The resolution is approved.
Item 14, resolution regarding approval of educational specifications for the Stafford School Roof Replacement Project at the Stafford School, 212 Louisiana Avenue, Bristol. And again, there is a resolution to read, Your Honor? I can do that, Your Honor. Resolved that the Bristol City Council approves the education specifications for the Stafford School Roof Replacement Project located at Stafford School, 212 Louisiana Avenue.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Resolution is approved.
Item 15, resolution regarding approval to submit application to Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety, fiscal year 2020, distracted driving high-visibility enforcement grant for overtime expenses. And there is a resolution to read, Your Honor?
I have that resolution, Your Honor.
Okay.
Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety for year 2020 distracted driving high-visibility enforcement grant is hereby approved, and that the Mayor, Ellen Zapposasou, or Acting Mayor, and the Chief of Police or Acting Chief of Police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all documents related to this application, funding, grant, including but not limited to any final funding, award, grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say that I'm sure the council will agree that the majority of our constituent complaints are around traffic and speeding and all types of nuisance issues related to this. So it's important to know that the public understands that we try to do as much as we can and get as many grants as possible in order to step up our enforcement whenever possible. So this, combined with the next item that we're going to talk about, is two very powerful tools that we can do in order to have more enforcement where people feel that it is most important. So I know that we've all talked about those problem areas. We've done a ton of traffic studies over the last two years, and it's an epidemic. And so these types of tools are going to help us, hopefully, harness some of this back into submission, because it's been pretty bad for a few years. There's no other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's a resolution.
Resolution, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Resolution is approved.
Item 16, resolution regarding approval to submit application to U.S. Department of Justice 2020 COPS Hiring Program to hire five new police officer positions. And there is a resolution to read, Your Honor?
Somebody have the resolution?
I can do that. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under the United States Department of Justice 2020 COPS Hiring Program to hire five new police officer positions is hereby approved, and that the Mayor, Ellen Zapposasou, or Acting Mayor, and the Chief of Police or Acting Chief of Police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application slash funding slash grant, including but not limited to any final funding slash award slash grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
So discussion. I know that this looks like a big number, but this is a grant that allows us to hire on a sliding scale. I don't know, Chief, did you want to give a little bit of an overview to our viewing audience so that they understand the impact and that we're not just advertising for five police officers?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City of Bristol. So what this grant allows us to do is, we have a staffing level maximum of 122 sworn Bristol Police Officers at the moment. We are currently at 117. This five officers will be in addition to that 122 staffing. It requires us to identify some problem areas, and we have to be specific as to what these positions are going to go towards. This grant will be focusing on violent crime initiatives, as well as school initiatives. What we're going to be looking to do is put together, we don't have the term yet, but basically like a community action team made up of what we'd like to see for police officers, and we're looking to add to our school resource program, which would be another dedicated officer in our school system. So, that'll be five in the addition of the 122 that we're sworn for right now. The deal is that we- they provide a 75% match for salaries for the three years, and then I'll have to plan for, to take on those positions in the- in the fourth year. One of our goals is to increase the staffing levels at the Police Department to address the ongoing issues that we have in the city, and, you know, we're going to need about 20 more cops to enforce the no tobacco laws in the- in the parks, thanks to the docs. So, we just are being tasked with more and more, and we need the resources to be able to address that, and this will be very helpful in us being able to increase our staffing and get some help along the way so that we can plan for it.
Does anybody have any questions on how the grant works, or any other questions of the chief?
Well, certainly back to the census, if we have a new, more accurate count of how many people live in Bristol, and it's more than it was before, does that change our opportunity to apply for different grants and funding, because we need, we would need more police officers for the increase in population?
Yep, so we have a whole bunch of statistical data that we have to go through. Part of- part of this grant is going through all that data, looking at crime trends, seeing what issues we are having, and being able to, we have to state why we need these officers to address these issues, and- and those, population goes into it, crime statistics, a whole bunch of data. It's a very competitive grant, there's no doubt about that, there's a lot of work that we have to do, but I'm eager to do it, and I have a great staff eager to do it, and we want to- we want to get it done, so.
Thank you, Chief. While you're standing here?
Yes.
Maybe you could do the 30-second overview of what our minimum manpower standard of 122 is, where you think it should be, and where comparable cities with a 60,000 approximate population are.
Yep, so our 122, many years ago, we were actually up around 127, I believe, and that happened, we had a grant way back many years ago, and what ended up happening is those positions, those six positions were eventually eliminated. Departments are our size, for community our size, are usually in the 130s, 135, 136 areas. So we are definitely trying to bolster our ranks so that we can address the issues. Many of the things that we have going on, you're talking about traffic enforcement, we have dedicated specialists that go into those divisions, but we have to be able to manage our front line, which is our patrol division responding to calls for service. Our calls for service are going up there, you know, we're just being tasked with doing more and more, and we need the people to do that, but we also need the specialists to stay in their divisions to be able to address the specific issues going on. So, we definitely have a plan to increase the staffing level in our department so that we can get up to where we should be and be able to address our issues.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns on item 16? Hearing none, all in favor?
It's a resolution.
Starting on my far left?
Yes.
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 And the chair votes yes, the resolution is approved.
And we've already done item 17. So the next two items are the executive sessions. One is for the EHDOC Anthony Di Lorenzo Towers Limited Partnership versus City of Bristol, and the other is the Connecticut CVS Pharmacy LLC versus the City of Bristol.
It'll just be our office going in with you.
Okay. So, is there a motion to convene into executive session to come before us?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I am going to be abstaining from the CVS Pharmacy discussion, because I am a CVS Health employee, so I would, okay, I will not be present.
So Councilwoman Barney will be joining us for the first one, and will recuse herself for the second.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion has been made and is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This appears to be a very short executive session, so we will be right back.
Motion to come back in executive, from executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please let the record show that no votes were taken during the executive session. Are there any motions to come before the council following executive session?
Yes, I have one motion, and I'm unaware if there is a second, but I move that the litigation matter, EHDOC Anthony Di Lorenzo Towers Limited Partnership versus City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number HHB-CV-18-6044209-S be resolved by a stipulation to judgment which adjusts the 2017 grand list value of the real property at 284 North Main Street at $6,300,000, and that the assessor is authorized to make this judgment. I further move that the Corporation Council be authorized to execute this stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before us?
I have a motion, Your Honor. I move that the litigation matter, Connecticut CVS Pharmacy LLC versus City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number HHB-CV-18-6044352-S be resolved by a stipulation to judgment which adjusts the 2017 grand list value of the real property at 839 Farmington Avenue at $3,500,000, and that the assessor is authorized to make this adjustment. I further move that the Corporation Council be authorized to execute this stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For the record, I abstained. Sorry, I wasn't sure what I was going to say.
Is there any other business to come before the city council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.